Today, February 24th, a school board meeting will begin with our pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, here this evening. Our mission is to educate, empower, and inspire excellence. We do have registration for anyone who would like to speak to the board on any of the actionable items on our agenda this evening. There are forums over here near Mr. Elwood. Please fill it out and return it to the board table. We also have public comment at the end of our meeting for any topic that anyone would like to bring up with the board. You, you don't get to say anything. But the same process, fill out the form and return it up here to the board table. All board members were provided background information prior to this evening's meeting in preparation for this meeting. And our meeting is being livestreamed and we welcome those who are watching us remotely or at a later date. With that, we'll begin with our first order of business, which is our student and staff presentations. We begin with our trio presentation by Mr. Steve Disney. Steve, welcome.
Thank you.
What you're here?
Alright. Well, good evening, members of the board. Dr. Alanez and Dr. Stevens. I would like to say thank you for hosting us tonight to give you a brief overview on the Educational Talent Search Program from Purdue Northwest, the Westville campus, and our partnership with Portage Schools. My name's Steve Disney, retired superintendent, principal, and teacher, thirty-two years, and I am the Educational Talent Search Director at Purdue in Westville. It's a pleasure to introduce our new program coordinator, Mrs. Angela Redker. Angie is also the Portage School Advisor, and she comes to us, was a past ag science teacher and technology teacher from East Porter and the Port County Career Center. So, going in, slide three is just our other staff members. And if we move into the next slide, who's eligible for Trio, the Educational Talent Search? We serve students grade six through twelve, and sixty-seven percent of our students must be both first-generation, low-income. Our, we serve six hundred and seventy-nine students in four counties in Northwest Indiana. Our target partner districts include Knox Millan High School, North Judson Millan High School, Michigan City High School, Parker, Kruger Middle Schools, and Portage High School, Willow Creek and Fagley Middle Schools, as well as River Forest Millan High School. Our mission's to partner with local schools to provide support to students and promote education to improve quality of life outcomes. Ms. Redker?
What the, what do we have to offer to our students here at Portage School? And when we come into schools, we do all of these things. A few that I touch on is especially our ACT and SAT team and our college visits. We do those each semester for the students, and it's an impactful thing for them to see different colleges, and we'll talk about that here in a few minutes.
Okay, and our annual performance report, or APR, this is a report that we file yearly with the federal government. And we have three goals. The first goal, target goal area, is secondary school persistence. And the goal is seventy-two percent, but that's students that stay in school and move on to the next grade level. And our outcomes were actually a hundred percent this past year. Goal two, secondary school graduation, eighty-seven percent. Goal of kids there in our program to graduate, and actually ninety-five percent of our students graduated. And then goal three is post-secondary attainment. And so what this is, is we, the students, as they graduate, we track them for a six-year period. And our target goal is for all those students that go on to college, twenty-nine percent of them to receive a college degree within the six years. And our rate was actually fifty-five point five percent. The next slide, I took some data for you as a board community, so regarding Portage Schools and our participants. So we have twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty students from Portage that are in the program, forty-nine students from Fagley Middle School, forty-three students from Willow Creek, and then a hundred-and-twenty-eight high school students. And then on the right, last year, we had twelve seniors that were high school graduates of Portage that graduated from our program. Of that, those twelve seniors, fifty percent of those enrolled in post-secondary education. As I said, we track for a six-year period, and so we just finished our reporting. In the class of two thousand and eighteen from Portage High School, we had forty-three seniors. And out of the forty-three seniors, thirty-four of them, seventy-nine percent went on to college. And probably say that fifty-six percent of them earned a college degree. And these next couple of slides are just some of the educational program that we offer and that we take kids to. Next slide. Some of the college visits, so although we're affiliated with Purdue, we provide kids with tours and to look at colleges from around the state, as well as outside the state of Indiana. And this, coming up, we'll be taking a group of kids to Milwaukee, to Marquette, and University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee. And then, some of the other educational programming. And the next, and so, in closing, I gave members of the board, Purdue University is offering Northwest next, this coming Saturday, March first, a parent university. This is open to all parents, not just our kids in all schools, and it's in partnership with the Indiana Higher Education Committee. And it's to help parents to kind of understand, alright, what's the requirements of parents, financial literacy, scholarships, et cetera, so. Any questions?
Anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Disney about the program?
I would like to know, first of all, thank you, Dr. Disney, for coming over and explaining to us about your program. The, how are the students informed about these opportunities? How, it, it, it states that they're starting at grade six, but who actually does the recruiting and informing?
So we've done a partnership for schools. Our advisors come in and work with Willow Creek and Fagley, parent do some, and it's a different program at the middle school level. And it expands as we go into high school. So, we have, when seniors graduate, we're gonna have X amount of open slots for parents to apply and students, and we go through that application process. And then through there, Angie works with the kids to let them know, here's some events that we've had coming up, et cetera. We just want to thank your high school principal, Mr. Stills, and your guidance department. They involved us in your recent eighth-grade orientation night, so we were there with the table and probably talked to about a hundred and fifty parents that night.
Any of the questions?
One more question. I understand that the United States Department of Education funds this program. Is, does Purdue also pay for this, or is it?
Purdue has some in-kind contributions, however, this program's been in place since nineteen sixty-eight. And so even before the Department of Education, but understanding that we're all going through. I'll be in Washington, DC in a couple of weeks, and we'll see what that entails.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a great program, and I know it's opened up many opportunities for Portage kids over the years and continues to do that. So, we hope that the program will continue on, and we appreciate you being here this evening.
We enjoy the partnership, and thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on our agenda, we've got our strength and conditioning presentation. Mr. Stills?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us today. I want to thank Dr. Alanez and the board for supporting our decision for a strength and conditioning coach to Portage High School. As you know, hiring a strength and conditioning coach can help athletes improve their performance, prevent injuries, and develop lifelong fitness skills. Quality strength and conditioning program led by a quality full-time coach goes well beyond improving physical performance and instilling lifelong character development. There's overwhelming evidence validating that physical activity improves brain function, including a profound positive impact on mental health. So while our high school athletes will greatly benefit from this decision, we would eventually like to see all of our students take advantage of what this new program brings to Portage High School. I would like our athletic director, Brett Saint Germain, and our new strength and conditioning coach, Shane Nelson, to come up and say.
Thank you, Mr. Stills. Well, I guess I'll just kind of give a quick little summary background to kind of where we're at and how this all materialized. So the strength and conditioning sports performance class that we're gonna implement into the curriculum next year really is, has been around for a while in, in, in high school athletics, and it really isn't anything new. If you kind of look around the landscape, not only in the area, in the state, really across the country, this is something that is common. And since I've been back, I was kind of surprised that really the fact that we didn't have it in place. So I'm gonna just throw some numbers out right now, okay? Michigan City, two-hundred. LaPorte, two-hundred, and that number's gonna double next year based on new equipment and a new room. Maryville, three-hundred. Lake Central, three-hundred. And that's gonna increase exponentially because they're adding freshmen. Valpo, three-fifty. Chesterton, five-fifty. Crown Point, seven-hundred-plus. Those numbers represent the number of student athletes that are currently in a sports performance, strength, conditioning class during the school day. Currently, second semester. And that's what's going on across the landscape of high school athletics. It's part of the curriculum. Portage High School, twenty-nine. So I think you can see that we need to create greater opportunities for our student athletes, and we've done so. Okay, so, along with Mr. Stills, our administrative team, our guidance department, Amanda, everyone that's involved. Shane, we are, we are, we are moving forward, and we're gonna implement this. And we've brought a number of our student athletes, because at this point, we've really implemented it, like you've done at old school, after school. And as you all know, there's many benefits to, to the kids after school, but the massive benefits of doing it during the school day is, is, there's, there's so many benefits, I'm not gonna go over all those. But we're gonna have some of the kids just to speak on some of those, okay? So we're excited about that. We know it's gonna help us out. We can already see some of the differences. And they're gonna, they're gonna be a testament to, to that. We're seeing that already, okay? One example here, we got, we got Michael Ortega that just walked in, and not just because he finished second in state. Okay, if any of you followed the state wrestling this past, past weekend, Michael Ortega just walked in, finished second in state, which is a huge accomplishment, okay? But going through the, going through this, the program, and just talking with Shane, and Shane will get up here in a minute. You know, and we brought, brought these kids in because he gets the chance, he gets the chance to kind of highlight some of these kids that have bought in. Okay, and it's, there's, there's no magic to this. Okay, the kids that buy in and the kids that do it right, roll up their sleeves and go to work and do it, good things happen. And we're seeing it, okay? And he's one of them. And if any of you watched it, if any of you were there, this kid put on a magical performance this weekend. And I had a chance to talk to him, and even though I really don't know him that well, had a chance to tell him how proud he made people in Portage. Because the best thing you can do as an athlete is to make sure when you perform, is that people remember your name based on your performance, based on what you do, based on how you do it. And there is no question, there is no question that this young man here, and really all of them here, but I'm pointing him out now because that's the most recent, there's no question that this young man left a massive impression on the people in that stadium, and they know who Michael Ortega is by the way he represented himself, the way he handled himself. And I think a big part of it is, he was able to display his talents because he prepared himself, not only mentally and physically and all that stuff, but this was a part of it. This was a huge part of it, okay? And before I get Shane up here to talk, we talked to all the classes as they're scheduling, and I'm the athletic director, and we told the kids, listen, the expectation, if you're an athlete, you're gonna get in the class. But we're not telling you that athletics is, that athletics is the most important thing. Academics is still the most important thing you're gonna do. And don't go home and tell your parents that we're saying athletics is the most important thing. Academics is the most important thing. The expectation is if you can fit in your schedule, you're gonna do this. We gave them the numbers. My job as the athletic director is to put you in a position where you can compete with these other schools in our conference, and the numbers, these are the numbers. And this is our job, and this is what we're trying to do for you, because there's massive benefits to let you do this during the school day and not have to worry about it after school. So once you get done with practice, you don't have to worry about training till six o'clock, seven o'clock, eight o'clock. When you're out of season, you don't have to then go after school. You can put your efforts on academics and other things. So there's a ton of benefits to all this. So, a lot of positive things. It's really great for our school, really great for the kids. I'm gonna let Coach Nelson talk, and then we'll get a chance for some of the kids to talk. Thank you.
This guy stole my thunder. Anyway, I'm Shane Nelson, for those of you that don't know me. This is my fourth year here at Portage now. I came from another school corporation to the, to the east. For spending many years there as a strength and conditioning coach. Yeah, first off, I want to say thank you to Dr. Alanez, Mr. Stills, Mr. Saint Germain for making this possible, for bringing this opportunity to me, asking me if I would have any interest in this undertaking. Really excited. You know, I've got really three things that, in my program, what I want for the kids. You know, I want to build the biggest, fastest, strongest athletes we possibly can. I want to reduce injuries. And I want to prepare our guys and girls, those that want to play at the next level. I want them to be prepared to enter a college strength and conditioning program. When a, when a college gets an athlete from Portage, I want them to say, wow, these, these guys, these gals are prepared for this. They're, they're ready to go. So those are my big three focuses. But yeah, so far, it's just kind of been an after-school thing. We're excited to get, to get going all day next year. As Mr. Saint Germain said, we've got four-hundred-and-twelve kids signed up currently from the twenty-nine. So if we do, do the math on that, divided by, you know, seven mods a day, we're gonna have about sixty athletes every period cycling through. So, we're hoping that that gets us on that level with the Chestertons and the Crown Points and the Valpos of the world. That's, that's our goal. But yeah, I want, I want to introduce all of our kids. These, these are kids, it's a cross-section of about four different sports, I believe. And not coincidentally, we give a lifter of the month award every month, and all of these kids have been lifter of the month, you know, different month. So, Cindy, do we want to roll the video first? Show that video, and, so this is kind of, this was shot real quick, a few months back. But here we go. So, yeah, that was shot a few months ago, and that's just, like I said, that's kind of been just an after-school, before and after-school thing. That's what our, every mod, every day is gonna look like. But real quick, I just wanted to touch on, on these athletes. You know, Mike Ortega, we've, we've already talked about. He's, you know, done a great job. I started officially on July first, so these kids pretty much have all been with me since, since July first. So about six months we've, we've put into the program. So, we've got Garrett Clark, Sam, and Mike Wellman from the basketball team. You know, just won a conference championship, first time in, since what, nineteen eighty-eight, right? Am I right? So, putting in a ton of work. You know, these guys come every day, ready to go, and I think it shows. One of the proudest moments for me as a strength and conditioning coach was what we did to Crown Point. I mean, they've got a, a highly, highly regarded strength and conditioning program. It's been, it's been going for twenty years. And we had people say that, you know, they couldn't move us. They tried moving us up on the blocks, and, and we were just out-physical them. So I was very, very proud of those guys for that. Got a couple of girls here, Hope, Hope Helt, she's from the softball team. Hope's done a great job, also bought in from day one. The thing that I love about Hope is it's like, I've got an assistant coach with me. You know, if I'm across the room doing something, she always takes the, the freshman, we actually, softball, we have middle school girls that come too. And if I look across the room, she knows what I expect and what I want, and how lifts should look, and I can look across the room, and she's teaching the, the young girls. So, does a fantastic job. J.C. Bog, next to Hope, she's from the cheer team. Really cool thing that I've been told multiple times at basketball games is how fit and how strong our cheerleaders look. So, she comes every day and, and brings it. I feel bad with the cheerleaders sometimes. They, if the other teams are in the, in the weight room, we kind of have to go out in the field house and do some bodyweight things, but, but she comes and, and we get it done. Over there, we got a couple of guys from the baseball team, Tyler Porowski and Ryan Bog. Again, guys that have been with me since July. Actually, they've been, last couple of seasons, I coached baseball, and I was kind of the strength coach for the baseball team, and so they've been with me for a little bit longer. But again, just guys that, that come to work every day. Couldn't be more prouder of, of this entire group here. You know, I'll let them talk a little bit if they, if they want to about the program, but yeah, I, I'm really excited. I think we've got big, big things are about to happen, you know, and we're just looking forward to it. So, thank you, everyone, for your time. Again, thanks for everybody that's, that's made this possible. Really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody like to talk about your experience? Love to hear from you. Yeah, go ahead.
When, maybe like, before he, before he came into becoming the strength and conditioning coach, going into wrestling season, I'm, I'm cutting weight, so it's always hard maintaining a certain amount of muscle throughout the season. When you're cutting so much weight throughout the season, it just starts to deplete, 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 deplete. But I felt like this year was, it was really different. I was able to, I was able to maintain most of my muscle and most of my endurance the whole entire season. And that, I thought that was really cool. I thought that was really amazing to, to keep. I don't know, I, I felt like that really benefited me, especially at state, especially at state, because when you got one, one last single in ya. Sorry, I was not ready to speak at all. I was not ready to speak at all. But, I don't know, I just felt, just looking at the stats and statistics of it, I was able to keep all my maxes the same from when I was one-hundred-and-sixty-five pounds to me being a hundred-and-fifty pounds.
Anybody else want to talk about what, I know a lot of you are seniors, what would it have meant to you to have, be able to do this during, during the school day instead of after school? Just curious. He's nodding his head, so he gets to go up and speak.
No, I think since, I mean, for all of us, I think I could speak for all of us. Like, it's been since July first, I think he started, like, all of our bodies have just completely changed. From our physique to our endurance to, I mean, it carries over on baseball field, basketball court, wrestling mat. I would really have loved to have this since my freshman year. I think this is the best I've looked, best I've felt my entire life. So, I think since my freshman year, it would have been amazing, but we got it one last year, and that's all we could have to do.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
I'm just gonna touch on the in-school part of the deal. I mean, I'm just gonna be honest, after freshman year, every student has at least one free mod. And instead of just sitting in class doing nothing or eating Doritos, being in the weight room, you know, getting in shape and figuring yourself out physically is probably the best use of that time. So I think, not just for the athletes, but for just, you know, regular kids going on throughout their day, I think that'd be a great opportunity for everybody.
Great, thank you. Do you have a comment?
One question, Mr. Stills. How is that gonna look in terms of scheduling, with the students?
I agree with you, I've been looking at Brett and Shane, I look over at her. So, the other school would currently make all of their athletes get in the year. It's, it was then, well, it was zero, I don't know, it's been, it hasn't caused her any truth. And she's really a big force behind this, because she made it in the process. It's not really a kind of.
She and I actually talked this morning, and I think what we're looking to possibly do is create like a rookies' class with incoming freshmen. We've got about thirty-seven or so freshmen the next year that are, that have signed up. So I think the way it's gonna work is, three mods, hopefully, are just gonna be freshmen, because it'd be a lot of.
Like beginners?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of instruction, a lot of teaching online in those three classes. And then, if it works out the way it hopefully works out, then there'll be four mods, our upper company, that's.
It's only a credit class, it gets credit. The kids, the road towards their graduation, all this competing requirement. So, it's not as if they're taking a class out of their schedule. It's part of a, of a, very cool.
Thank you.
So, is there a strength training class? Because I graduated in oh-one, and I remember it was an option for gym class. You could take strength and conditioning, you could take. Did they take that out, and then this, you're gonna re-implement it, or is there not an option to take a strength training class as a physical education class?
There's been a chance.
Right now, there is? Okay. I was just curious. This just sounds way better.
Is that, is this replacing that class, Mr. Stills?
Yes, this would be throughout the day. Any kid can take it, whether they're a high school student.
The rest will require that, just for interest, that's a, that's a long, not the mentioned benefits of the rest of life.
But all of it, it's been, it's been.
A few things just to mention. I had tasked the group this time, well, I, I want to say it was probably March of last year, and I said we would have this, around this time of year, to bring in the proof of why this is so necessary. As soon as July one hit, walking around that building after hours and seeing just the sheer number of kids in there, hearing from parents. Nick and I spoke one day on the sidelines just about the changes that occurred over the summer. Obviously, I have a nephew who is involved in it, and hearing from his parents, just the good things. And knowing a lot of the student athletes, it's been really a great opportunity for us to kind of put our money where our mouth is, as far as helping our kids to become in the. as far as helping our kids to become in the best physical shape as they possibly can. I think that this would not have been a success without the right person, right? You have to have someone that the kids are willing to follow. You have to have someone who has that expertise, who has that passion, and also the ability to motivate the kids. The way that they bring in the data, Ortega mentioned it specifically, these kids are tracking their data, tracking their progress, and they're seeing the results in more than just the mirror. So I could not be more proud of how everyone has taken this on. But I really appreciate, more than anything, what you guys have set as the tone for athletes to come. Because this really sets a culture that we've not had. And you guys have set that bar very, very high. And so I want to commend you all for that, because this was outside of your school day. And now they will be able to do it, as you mentioned, within the school day, but setting the tone when it wasn't easy for you to be able to do that. I greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, this is awesome. Congratulations. And we certainly are proud of all of you for all your accomplishments, both in the classroom and outside the classroom with athletics. And we enjoy seeing your successes and hearing about your successes. What a great program. We're probably going to wear your equipment out. We're going to add some money in the budget.
We, we have. We've done a few things.
But that's all a good thing. And it's a great program. And it's great to see, start to see a lot more success in our athletic program. I mean, to be honest, we suffered for a long time. And now we're, you know, to see we're breaking records and we've got people, you know, competing in state championships and, you know, we're winning conferences that we hadn't done in a long time. And it's just, it's exciting to see, you know, athletic isn't everything. But for a community, the schools, you know, we always say the schools are the cornerstone of the community. But a lot of that happens because of athletics, right? It brings in a lot of community spirit, gets people involved and paying attention to what's going on in the schools. So we appreciate all our student athletes, our coaches, and the staff for everything you do. And thank you for this program. And you can see there's a passion behind it. And I know that passion leads into these guys. And you can tell, watching these kids on the court and on the ball fields and the cheerleaders, you can tell they're physically fit and they're prepared. And they play tough. So we do appreciate everything you guys are doing. So thank you.
One last thing I just wanted to share. Sorry, Attorney Elwood. We also will have an additional PE teacher in every mod. So when there are those 60 students in there, Coach Nelson will be in there along with a PE teacher. So again, just making sure that we've got that under control with the, just the number. We don't want to turn our kids away, but that requires, again, just some investment in personnel. So that will be an added bonus too, so that that kind of brings that cohesiveness of that conditioning and different things with PE.
So as the community goes north and south on airport, will we be seeing you outdoors at the new park, working out? Would that be a location that you would take your students?
The wrestlers have, yeah. I think, you know, obviously that was built later in the fall. I think they'll come when the weather breaks. We'll see how they'll be saying. Do we have anything else? If not, again, thank you for being here this evening. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. I know you've got other things to do. You're welcome to, if you'd like to. It's very exciting stuff we do here. So if not, again, thank you for all being here. Love to shake your hands.
Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Good job.
Good job. Congrats. Good job, bud.
Good job. Good job. Congratulations.
Thanks.
All right. Good stuff. It's always a highlight of the board being, having good students here. It's always makes it fun. Okay, move on. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from the board this evening? If not, we'll move on to our superintendent's consent agenda, which contains our personnel report for February 24th, donation report, our claims report and facility use request report. We have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. Who's our secretary today? Okay, just making sure.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Good motion, second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you to the business that donated $1,633.29 in tokens for one book on school.
Any other comments or discussion? Here, Nicole Rolfe, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Maleta?
Yes.
Trustee Ramian?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, yes.
Okay, next we've got our board's consent agenda with our minutes of our February 10th discussion meeting, the minutes of our executive session from February 24th. We have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the board consent agenda.
Okay.
Good motion, second. Any discussion? Nicole Rolfe's?
Trustee Maleta?
Yes.
Trustee Ramian?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to board development. Are there any committee reports this evening?
I'd like to report that the RDC will be meeting this Thursday at 4:30 at City Hall. It is live streamed. Can I also make a report for trustee Wilkie?
Yes.
So we both attended the State House on February 18th, which was a bill. The agenda for the morning included the 2025 session legislative briefing from the Indiana School Board Association staff. The caucus leader panel answered questions and they provided this information and description of the legislative issues and concerns. And then it was followed by the education committee panel. I want to thank Senator Rodney Poe, who was able to join us during lunchtime to further discuss in a more intimate session some of our questions and concerns. We then went to the State House, where the committee meetings, one session. Just some information, background information, the Indiana General Assembly is a long session required to conclude by the 29th day of April. It is also the budget session requiring adoption of a two-year stated budget for the fiscal years of 2026 and 2027. So the Indiana School Board Association is tracking 184 bills of the 1,232 that have been produced. So all of these bills must clear the third reading by April 15th in order to remain active. The priorities for the Indiana School Board Association legislative priorities include the H, the House Bill 1,001 state budget, the Indiana secured safe, school safety grant, the referendum ballot language change, and the TIF taxing matters. The key education bills supported by Indiana State School Board Association are the various education matters, education matters, the school of accountability, the teacher appreciation grant, teacher compensation, education matters, absenteeism, and school chaplains. The education bill opposed by the Indiana School Board Association is the school corporation reorganization, school board elections, special education, facilities and transportation pilot programs, local public questions, property tax, school board matters, business person property tax, and school property taxes. As a school board, we're encouraged to report to the board throughout these sessions and continue to monitor the ISBA weekly legislative updates. We're encouraged to respond immediately to the call to action alerts and attend forums or even host our own legislative forum. Our legislative representative, trustee Wilkie, will provide us with updates as they do become available. And if we have anyone that would like to make comments about these bills, we can do so probably at the end of our school board meeting. I also have the list of all of the bills, which is quite a few of them. They are, some of them have already, of course, met and they're going to the House. They are monitoring them. They're approved by the state, the Senate. And last week, there is also some information about the referendum. And if you want to look on the, online, they indicate whether they're active or not active at this point. That's all I have for this report.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it does make sense. I mean, these bills, when you receive these emails and hopefully everybody gets those from the ISBA and you're paying attention, there's a lot of stuff that comes out. I mean, they slip things in other bills and there's, it's, we've really got to stay on top of it. And those calls of action are really important. So when you get those emails and it says, hey, get ahold of, you know, here's a list of representatives or senators on this bill, you know, contact them immediately with an email or whatever it might be. It's important that we do that. Because it just feels like all the schools are constantly on the defensive anymore. And if we don't keep fighting and trying to punch back, they're, we're going to get defeated in this thing. And it's, it's hard. It wears you down. But there's just so much stuff out there that's just not good for our kids and our community or our school system. And thank you, trustee Wilkie, for going there and participating. And we'll just have to keep fighting. That's all we can do.
We also like to encourage our teachers, our staff, to also be aware of what's going on and, you know, make their voices heard as well.
Yeah, and I'm sure the teachers' association probably has a call to action too. But I wonder if we should be sharing, should be sharing some of those call of action with our, with them or with our, with our staff?
I'd probably have to check with Attorney Elwood to see what is and is not doable, just so that we're...
Yeah, we're going to need permission from the union. But we can certainly do it if they give us permission. Or we can send it to them and they can distribute it.
Yeah, I mean, certainly on these, these topics, if there's things that are coming up that we think maybe, you know, having another hundred or so voices maybe responding from our district might be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, certainly a shared interest.
Thank you.
Any other board reports today?
Portage Township Educational Foundation held their Harlem Wizards night last Thursday and had approximately 600, 700 people attend. It was a great night. It was cold, but people came out and supported that. And so a lot of volunteers. And it was a long night. I mean, I know we were there until about 10:00, but it was exciting. For a lot of elementary families, make that a big part of their, like, you know, what they do together. And that was really cool to see. And then the result of that now was funds have been raised and have been with other fundraisers for the grants. Cycle is now open for Portage Township Schools staff to apply online for grants, where those dollars will get awarded for them to use in their classrooms and projects and outside-the-box thinking, which is really cool. So that event was a huge success.
Who won the game?
I think the Wizards by 10:00, but we, we were, we were close.
Thank you.
They were able to, to, I'm sorry, they were able to recruit our mayor and our Senator Poe to participate. And I was able to take quite a few pictures of them too.
Yeah, I attended the Food and Pantry on February 18th. I found something kind of interesting. The month of December, they brought in 21,676 pounds of perishable goods, food items, totaling 230,740 for the year. And that, that to me was good, because the next step that they had was in 2023, at the end of the year, they had 157,000 pounds of food brought in. So there was a difference of 72,930 pounds more in that year. I thought that was a pretty good year they had in donations. That was my first one going there. But I learned a lot from them. And they're really embracing talking fundraisers they have coming up for the year. They don't get to do a tag day this year because Mayor Vanta took those away, where you get to stand on like Hamstrom and Central and all that. So for safety reasons, no one is allowed to do that. Plus, people were doing that without permission. They weren't signing up for that. So they're going to have a postal day. When I get that date, I will release it to everybody, where you put stuff in your mailbox, then the post office will pick it up. Obviously, when they do your mail, then they'll take it to, for pickup. So that date will be coming up. And then they're going to be doing stuff at Stracks and other places for donations for food and all that jazz. So.
Great, awesome. Thank you. Anybody have anything else? Okay. We'll move on to old business. We have the approval to bid award for the E-Rate services.
So attached is the bid evaluation sheet for your review and the recommendation letter. PTS E-Rate is in our final year of our current five-year funding cycle, following the evaluations submitted in the bids. Our director of technology, Matt Melton, is recommending awarding the Contract to Network Solutions, NSI, and their subcontractors for the procurement and installation to the agreed-upon UPS units. The remaining two budget stands at $43,543.29. The total eligible project cost is $62,919, leaving approximately $19,375.71 for any out-of-pocket expenses that we might have within PTS. The bidders provided detailed proposals outlining their approach to meeting our needs. However, Network Solutions distinguished itself as the responsive and dependable bidder.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the bid award to Network Solution and their subcontractors for the procurement and installation of the agreed-upon UPS units.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Good motion, second. Any discussion or questions?
I would just like to mention that this five-year cycle alone, we've received state grant funding. We've requested a total of $2,471,603.75. And our out-of-pocket has been $464,486. So obviously, these programs bring a significant value to our district and the infrastructure, and they're cost-effective for us.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Nicole Rolfe, please.
Trustee Ramian?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Maleta?
Yes. Okay, next we have our first reading of our NEOLA policies.
So attached you have various policies that the policy committee met, myself, trustee Vasquez, and trustee Wilkie to review. They are from various areas, and we worked closely with our NEOLA representative to kind of catch up some areas where we needed to just note a couple of specific policies as things, of course, change and evolve. But again, overall, always proud that in the nine years I've been here, this board has committed to keeping our policies up to date. So this was our most recent update that was provided from NEOLA. So we are still up to date.
Great, thank you. This is probably one of the most difficult things the committee to sit on, I know.
No, you appointed me every year.
Thank you for doing it. Cindy, thank you. I know Cindy does an incredible job of preparing these and having them ready. But these are always tough. There's just, you know, it's not the easy thing to do. But we appreciate everybody's time on that. And we'll let this serve as our first reading. And our March meeting will be second meeting and approval, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have the approval of the literacy grant distribution.
So the IDOE's early literacy achievement grant was established through HEA 101, 001-2023 to reward school teachers for improving students' foundational reading skills evidenced by iRead3 data. Portage Township Schools received $33,663.89 to distribute amongst eligible teachers. The guidance from the IDOE of who should receive these funds are as follows: Employ the entire 23-24 school year and maintain employment... the entire twenty-three, twenty-four school year and maintain employment at the data distribution. PTS can choose how to proportionally allocate these funds based on length of teachers who were not employed for the full duration. We have chosen to select this option if the individual was employed a minimum of one hundred twenty days, if they taught special education to students in grades K through three during twenty-three, twenty-four, if they were a K through three classroom teacher during that year, and/or a K through three Title One or Intervention teacher.
Thank you. You have a motion to approve the literacy grant distribution in the amount of thirty-three thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Make a motion to approve the literacy grant distribution.
Second. You have a motion second, any discussion, questions? Your non-call role, please.
Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Ramien?
Yes.
Okay, next we've got our approval of new course proposals for the business special topic, real estate, seventy-one forty-nine insurance fundamentals, and seventy-one fifty-one personal and commercial insurance, fifty-nine sixty-eight business special topic, entertainment marketing business special topic, entrepreneurship. Dr. Collins, you want to explain some of these courses?
Sure, so these courses to further go along with the new requirements of the graduation requirements for diploma, this is just creating yet more opportunities for our students to meet those expectations.
Great, thank you. You have a motion to approve the new course proposals, as read.
I make a motion to approve the new course proposals, as read.
I'll second.
You have a motion second, any discussion? I think these are great, this is good opportunities for our kids and helping them as they, you know, look toward their careers of close Portage High School, so this is, these are some great additions, thank you. Anybody have anything else? Your non-call role, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Ramien?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, yes.
Next we have our retroactive approval of a Portage High School overnight field trip to Indianapolis for the IHSAA Wrestling State Finals for the boys on February twentieth and twenty-third. You have a motion to approve this retroactive overnight field trip.
I make a motion to approve the overnight field trips.
Second.
You have a motion second, any discussion? Your call, roll, please.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Ramien?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Next we have the approval of the overnight field trip for Portage High School to the BPA State Leadership Conference on March ninth through the eleventh in Indianapolis, to Camp Tecumseh in Brooks, Indiana for Natural Helpers Retreat on March twelfth through the fourteenth, and a Portage High School HOSA Chapter State Leadership Conference on April fourteenth through the sixteenth in Indianapolis. You have a motion to approve these overnight field trips.
Make a motion to approve these overnight field trips.
I'll second. You have a motion second, any discussion or questions?
Just as I was reading through the description of the field trips, I noticed that what a benefit our students are going to have from meeting and interacting with adults and other students from around the state of Indiana, they will have, they continue to study, practice for competition that just really prepares them for the future, and the national, I'm sorry, the natural helpers, they learn self-help skills and self-care and lessons, they take it to college life and community, so it's just, it's not just a field trip, it's just an all-the-way-around educational opportunity for them.
Yeah, and I think you would, if you asked students who have participated in these five, ten years later, they would tell you the influence that these programs did in their lives and in their careers, especially as it relates to leadership and those things. So these are certainly great programs that we're doing, and certainly proud of our school system for offering these to our kids. Any other comments? Your call, roll, please.
Trustee Ramien?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Next we have the approval of the special bus purchase.
So this is one of the items where we have to make a record for state board of account that we're exercising our right to a special purchase. This has to do with buses. You'll hear under the next line item that they should bid through the cooperative bidding process, but under IC five dash twenty-two dash ten dash eight, a purchasing agent may make a special purchase when the compatibility of equipment, accessories, or replacement parts is substantial consideration in the purchase. So we have all international manufactured buses, we do in-house mechanical work, which a lot of districts don't, we save tens of thousands of dollars by doing that, so it has to do with the compatibility of our equipment, our training, et cetera. So I just need a motion, if the board so chooses, to approve this as a special purchase.
So this isn't actually purchasing the bus on this motion, this is allowing up to...
It's gotta be, yeah, it's gotta be two separate motions.
Great, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the special bus purchase?
I make a motion to approve the special bus purchase.
Second.
You have a motion second, any questions? Your call, roll, please.
Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Ramien?
Yes.
So next we have the approval of the bus purchase.
Yes, so the International Motors, you'll see the memo talks about the cooperative bidding, that's done by the state on some common items like buses, we've always purchased our buses through this. So multiple international motors manufacturers bid, multiple Thomas, multiple Bluebird, international was hired, but it's a recommendation of the superintendent and our transportation director to go with international because of what I just explained in the last item.
Great, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the bus purchase?
Make a motion to approve the bus purchase.
I'll second. You have a motion second, any questions or discussion?
I was a little bit confused at first, and so I was able to get clarification, and I appreciate that clarification from Attorney Elwood and the superintendent, thank you so much.
Thank you. Your call, roll, please.
Attorney, trustee Vasquez?
Don't move.
Don't bring that title. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Ramien?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, next we have the approval to advertise RFQ for access control.
So we would like to request your approval for quotes with the scope of work included, which is the installation of new lockdown buttons and an improved system integrated for our security measures across our facilities. This will ensure an updated safe environment for students and staff while aligning with our long-term security strategy. You have here, the quote's due date is Tuesday, March eighteenth at one P.M. It will be opened at the Portage Township Schools Administration Building right here, sixty-two forty U.S. Highway Six. We're hoping to have the start date of the project June second with substantial completion by August fourth.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? You have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve to advertise the RFQ for access control.
I'll second.
You have a motion second, any discussion? Your call, roll, please.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Ramien?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Lastly, we have the approval of contract service agreements and subscriptions for the IT Department for site license for new line software.
So this is so that we can utilize our digital signage, the platform continues to be essential for us in providing critical communication with the community and, of course, fostering that engagement.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
The motion second, any discussion or questions? Your call, roll, please.
Trustee Ramien?
Yes.
Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
All right, now we move on to our superintendent reports.
Just to share a few bills with you, in particular, school property taxes, this one is still moving, the Senate passed this by three votes, so moving forward in the House, Representative Thompson will be the sponsor of this bill after May tenth, twenty twenty, twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-five, it's regarding sharing revenue received from the levy with charter schools, only charter schools located within the attendance area of the school corporation that was added into this to receive a distribution of the revenue. Additionally, all school corporations to share revenue received from the debt service levy within certain charter schools, ultimately with distributions in twenty twenty-eight being shared revenue from the school corporation's operations fund levy with certain charter schools. So that is still moving. I wanted to share with you, this bill, in particular, there, the bill with the partisan school board elections, although the bill did not come for a third reading, so therefore it's not met the deadline for that, however, there is still a partisan election bill that is in two eighty-seven, so that's one to still watch. Again, it is, although not, didn't come out the first round, it is still alive in two eighty-seven. Interestingly, as we're talking about the first reading of policies, one of them being legal settlement, policy five one one-one, and there is a bill currently that Senator Ratz is moving forward with committee, removing language prohibiting certain students from enrolling into a school corporation primarily for athletic reasons, I know many of you have heard about this one, so it would require schools to allow this movement, IHSAA has testified on behalf of support of this, so we will see where this heads. So just wanted to share an update on those couple with you. Additionally, I wanted to mention a few items, I wanted to correct something I mentioned at the last meeting, trustee Ramien asked me about the fencing for the turf, and that is included in that base bid. So that is a good thing, that's for both the softball and baseball fields, the two fields that we are resurfacing. Fortunately, we did learn both at the city and state level that we do not have to have that underground water storage, so that will help us get some of those additional items that were alternates. I wanted to mention that Milay has communicated with our Jones principal regarding the exciting HVAC improvements they're going to be receiving this summer, so I will continue to update you on that. Dr. Stevens, myself, Milay, Nick, Matt, we sat through about eight hours this, well, not just this morning, today, talking about MEP for the new building, so mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, very exciting.
That's exciting.
Exciting because it's moving, but it was, it was a lot, so everything has, went as expected so far, Fanning Howey and Skilman both there, so that was a great deal of help. Buildings and Grounds Committee met, was that only last week? I think it was last week, we discussed several things to include the Willow Creek Project, the baseball, softball turf, various upcoming exciting things, potentially Kyle Windows, some different things that are on the horizon for us throughout the district. We also, after our last meeting, the school board retreat, I felt was very successful with Dr. Hallick, so again, I always appreciate the board's commitment to professional development. The only other item other than the fact that we have actually, again, professional development this evening with our work session for the ISBA seminars, I would just want to again congratulate all of our students, our coaches, the entire community on the great things, the successes from this weekend, from basketball to wrestling to swimming, to our music department for solo and ensemble at state, and there were so many more. So again, just, we know success breeds success, and the more that we continue to see this building and our kids buying in, again, I'm for certain that we'll continue to just grow our programs and see where this takes us with the commitment of our coaches and kids.
Thank you, I agree, boy, it's, if you watch any social media, there's so much going on in the schools, so much positive, good things at all the buildings and all levels, and it's really fun to, to watch that and see that and, you know, and hear of all the wonderful things that are going on, so congratulations and thank you to Melissa and her for the work that they do and making sure that those things are posted to the community to see because people just don't know, right, if, if, if we're not telling them of all those great things that are happening, and there certainly are just, it's, it's amazing, there's, I mean, there's so many things just every single day, and again, from the board standpoint, for myself personally, I just enjoy seeing that stuff because we know we have a great school system, and it's, it's cool to see us kind of putting it out there and letting others know as well. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Ellenis from her report? Okay, anybody have anything else for, for the board? I don't believe we've had any public comment forms.
We do not.
Okay, if not, entertain a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Your call, roll, please.
Trustee Smith, yes. Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Ramien?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.